And I see that we have all of our council members present, so why don't we go ahead and get started? We'll call the Johnson City Council meeting number 21-09 to order. Cindy, uh, Cindy will call, please.
Councilmember Cope. Evans. Martin.
Here.
Ready?
Yeah.
Temple.
Here.
Forum. Next item on the agenda is the welcome. Uh, would like to welcome everyone that is here with us this evening. If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for that, for you to wait for that item to come up and address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity of your public communications to present to the council. And when we get to that point, if there are members of the public, either here in person or with us virtually, we'll talk a little bit about, a little bit more about what we'll ask you to do before you make a presentation. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll ask our Parks Director, John Schmitz, to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Jim, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda this evening.
Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Don't move, Martin.
A second, Trish.
Motion and a second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans. Martin.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Moving on to Public Communications. We have two public communications this evening. Let me get to right folder here. The first is a proclamation in celebration of National Police Week, recognizing the contributions of the Johnson Police Officers to the Johnson community. And I will read that proclamation. We have a proclamation in celebration of National Police Week, recognizing the contributions of Johnson Police Officers to the Johnson community. Whereas the President of the United States designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through 15th as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Johnson Police Department work compassionately and selflessly on behalf of the residents of the Johnson community, regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves. And whereas every day Johnson's Police Officers honorably serve the residents of Johnson by enforcing the laws to protect and service from danger and those who would harm us. And whereas these same officers are regularly in our schools, churches, and neighborhoods to share information and to educate us and our children on actions we can take to safeguard our families, homes, and property. And whereas the men and women of the Johnson Police Department, by their patriotic service and dedicated efforts, have earned the respect and gratitude of the entire Johnson community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Paula Dernfeld, Mayor of Johnston, on behalf of the Johnson City Council, call upon all citizens of Johnston to express their appreciation for the Johnson Police Department and our police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our community and in so doing have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights, safety, and security of all our citizens. It in witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and the seal of the City of Johnston to be affixed this third day of May 2021. And I'd like to make a presentation of the proclamation to, um, is it Lieutenant? Lieutenant Johnson. And we have a second proclamation this evening, and it's a proclamation proclaiming May 2021 as Building Safety Month. David?
I won't make you read the entire proclamation, it's a little long. Uh, but I do want to recognize during May, we recognize Building Safety Month. I really want to recognize our, our code officials, our building staff, and our fire marshal staff who make sure all of our buildings are safe as they're being constructed. I want to give special recognition tonight, and I would have made him come, but he spent the last month in Arizona. Doug Sandvig is retiring July 2nd after a 26-year career with the City of Johnston. So I put together a couple of facts, you know, and I'll try to embarrass him, but I don't think he's going to let us do anything for him.
Is he listening?
No. He's gonna, he's gonna wander off and not let us do anything, because you know, he just likes to disappear, he's that kind of guy. Uh, but when he started in 1995, our population was 6,100 people. And since that time, and he was it. He was a single building official driving his own personal vehicle to and from inspections. To, to, to the time now, we've got four full-time building department staff. We've constructed 7,000 new residential units and $450 million in commercial valuation in his 26 years, and he's oversaw all of that. So, um, wanted to give him a little bit of recognition for his years. And I will, I'll try to get him here before he officially moves out of, uh, out of his position, but I'm not sure I'll be successful. So I wanted to recognize him tonight.
Are you going to be doing some sort of a?
Won't let me.
Well, then you better haul him in here.
Yeah, I'll do my best to get him here.
Well, maybe.
He's not listening very well right now, he's in retirement.
Maybe in his retirement, he'll go out and buy a Corvette, what do you think?
He's got one.
I know. What, what a car to drive, as a personal car.
I don't think he was driving a Corvette back then.
I'll make sure you bring him in here, because he has, uh, he has done a great for, a job for us over the years. And so we want to give him a little bit of a hazing before he leaves.
Kim, here, I would just add, you know, we had this, there was a news story recently about an apartment fire, I think at Cadence, where the fire, um, was just, was extinguished very quickly because of the sprinkler system in that apartment. And I think that reflects, that's a really good example of safe building. First of all, the building requirements, and I realize that when we put those requirements in place, those were not very popular. But I think that shows the value of that, and also the inspection process and making sure that all works. So, um, I, I, when I saw that, I thought that was a really great positive story, showing a reflection of good building codes. And just wanted to mention that. And also the people like that going out, making sure that stuff is, is, you know, working in the inspected initially.
Very good. Well, thank you. We are still under Public Communications. Is there anyone in the audience here with, that would like to address the council on an item that is not otherwise on the agenda? Seeing none. Cindy, do we have anybody out? And, okay, well then we will move on to public hearings. And we have one public hearing this evening, and that is to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of Resolution Number 21-131, a resolution releasing and vacating a public utility easement on property located at 11087 Northwest Towner Drive. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:00. There. He's muted. Okay.
Hey, David. Hey, guys. So I can't hear you very well, can you get to the mic, please?
Yeah, Aaron's on now. Still can't hear him.
Aaron's having difficulty, I'll, I'll cover this. So, uh, the council recently approved Wooded Acres Plot 1, which is up off of Northwest Towner Drive. There was an existing public utility easement on the plat at the time that predated the, the current plat. New easements were provided, and this easement is in conflict with the new lots and is not necessary. So this would, this action would vacate that easement and allow them to construct on the new lots that were plotted.
Really see a vicinity sketch that made it easy to tell where the easement was in relation to other stuff, or maybe I missed it, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure there was a good, they're hard to depict because they don't.
I would not call it detailed.
It's not detailed, no, that's, that's a typical easement.
It's a plat map, yeah. Yeah.
Basically it runs, I think, from Towner Drive up along the eastern boundary of one of the parcels, and then turns and heads back to the west. So that was, this was envisioned when the plat was done, this is just cleaning up that item.
Questions for David? This is a public hearing on this item, is there anyone that would like to make comments to the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:13. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-131?
Don't move, Martin.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Pass. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Have a motion and a second?
Oh, um, excuse me, Mayor, I do have a comment about the, uh, the meeting minutes from the special meeting, uh, that we had on Monday. So I'd like to correct the record. I, if you open up the meeting minutes there, it says that we has the vote on the option we picked for the intersection. But I'd like to, um, have the minutes amended to clarify. While it says that, uh, along with picking the, uh, option one, that we also discussed adding to, um, the, I don't know, what do you call it, resolution? That we would designate locations for street trees in the construction of that intersection, as in, in the easement areas, you're going to have water, gas, electric. You need to know where the street trees are going to be. And that I also asked that the street trees be part of the construction documents and the installation. So I'd like that to be part of the notes for our special minutes.
Action for the, yeah, to the minutes.
So I will amend my motion to approve the consent agenda to include the correction to the minutes for the special meeting highlighted by Councilperson Martin.
Also, as part of that discussion, Councilman Cope, there was, you made a point of pointing out the trees on the former Herd Garden property that you wanted some consideration being made for them. Was that part of your motion? Or was that just a statement that you were making? Because if it was part of your motion, I'd like to have the same list of trees that you discussed as being important, be part of our minutes.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too. So those were the, the different trees that have been highlighted on that property, along with the beach tree, uh, the various beach trees, so.
I would suggest that Cindy should go back and listen to the recording and make sure that if it's not part of the motion, that at least it's reflected in the minutes. We need to make sure that the, the minutes accurately report what, what happened. Thank you. amended, amended your motion, you've seconded it. Any further discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember, ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Martin? Yes.
On to the consent agenda, non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider first reading of ordinance number 1051 amending Chapter 99, Section 99.07, establishing sewer user charges effective July 1, 2021.
I'm sorry about that. Yes, there's no changes since our last discussion on this item, we had the first reading. Well, this is the first, I'm sorry.
Jim, I'm sorry, too. This is Teresa, and I had asked Jim to handle this issue for me because I wasn't sure I was going to be able to be there. Um, I'm zooming in, I hope you can hear me. This, this is the item that Matt Stufel was at the council meeting last, um, council meeting and talked about the cash flow analysis for the water and sewer fund. We're not changing the water ordinance, we're only changing the sewer ordinance, and we're only changing it for one year. And this is the first reading, changing the rate by the 5% as we discussed at the work session.
Council have any questions for Teresa?
I don't have a question. I, I would like to encourage that when we do the second reading, that we include in the public content, that spreadsheet that, that Matt had with the work session, so that if you're a citizen, it provides a little bit more context. And just by reading the ord, the ordinance tells you what the rate, new rate would be.
Sure.
I think needs, I think you need, I think it's harder for, I think it's harder as a citizen looking through this to figure out what all that means. And I just think the backup from Matt that shows that, it would be good to have as an attachment as well. So when we do our second and third reading, I just ask for that to be included as well.
The actual cash flow, Councilman Cope?
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
The spreadsheet that shows the 5% and 10%, those types of things.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1051?
Reprov, Cope?
Second, Temple.
Vote, please.
Member Temple?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Martin? Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Item 7B, consider second reading of ordinance number 1052, an ordinance amending the Johnson revised ordinances of 10, of 2007 by amending the language of Chapter 99.08 sanitary sewer, sewer user charge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, the second reading on this, there have been no changes or comments received. Uh, we would ask council that they could waive the third reading of the ordinance and adopt and publish.
Council have any questions for Matt on the second reading? If not, do we have a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 1052?
A second, Trish.
Second? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans? Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Motion passed. Do we have a motion to waive third, the third reading and to adopt and publish?
Don't move, Martin.
A second, Trish.
Motion and a second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Martin? Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Item 7C, consider Resolution Number 21-122 approving the site plans for Phase 1 improvements for the Lou Clarkson Park. The subject property is located north of Northwest 54th Avenue and east of Foxborough Drive. Can you cover it, John? Or Matt? He's muted. Is he? Is he using headphones sometimes? Oh, yeah, he's going to call in.
Okay, I think maybe you can hear me now.
We can hear you now.
I apologize for the troubles. So they, this project is an expansion of parking for Lou Clarkson Park. It would be adjacent to the softball fields. And Cindy, if you could pull up the site plan and take E500, give a good representation where the parking will be added. But this is, uh, an addition of 58 parking stalls. And again, that would be about existing softball fields. It also includes a stormwater impervious area. And on that site plan, it also has an outline of where a future public restroom and concession will be placed. The, there were no elevations permitted for that, because that's a future phase. So primarily what you're looking at is additional parking stalls and stormwater retention to accommodate that additional impervious pavement. And if you're able to see, uh, cheat C500, it'll give you a good representation of where parking stalls will be located.
Aaron, if you could maybe talk directly into your phone, you keep cutting out, I don't know if that'll make a difference.
Okay, I apologize for that. Really, just to be short and sweet, this is essentially 58 additional parking stalls, stalls adjacent to the softball fields and a stormwater retention basin to accommodate the additional impervious area from those additional parking stalls. And you can see there on the site plan that Cindy pulled up where those parking stalls are located. Just north and east of that additional parking is the outline of a future concessions building. That won't be constructed with this phase of development, but they're showing where it will be placed and, and the grading associated with it. Uh, because this is a park, there are no open space or landscaping requirements or setback requirements. Really, it's, it's rather procedural, but we did want to ensure that we've met all the requirements for stormwater retention. And if anybody has any questions, I can answer those.
So council, have any questions for Aaron?
The only question I have is how confident are we that this lot will solve the prop, the parking problems over there?
And I think that's probably better directed to John, is, is John in the audience tonight? John Schmitz?
Yep, I'm here, Aaron. Will it 100% solve the problem? That's to be, uh, decided later. Certainly adding 58 more stalls into the area is going to improve the conditions. I think you're going to find more of the softball parents obviously utilizing this parking. Between this and the other one that we added, um, just to, to the north of the fourplex, that added, uh, about, what, about eight years ago, that added over 100 spots. So, um, we continue working at this and, and trying to improve the parking situation. This phase is really looking at all the infrastructure and getting the site ready for the future improvements, mainly the concessions slash restroom facility, so.
Other timing on that phase?
That phase will start up next July. That's when the, it's within our capital improvement program.
Obviously, you've got, will, will, did this golf, that's part of this plan, too, right?
This golf, and it, it will have its own little small.
So that, in theory, will be, because there's going to be another small parking off of.
Correct.
It's, that is a part of the last phase of this. And, and in the consent agenda tonight, we had an item just to order construction. And that, if you look through the documents there, that breaks up the different phases for this project. And so that gives you a little bit of a sense. I do think that, you know, so my daughter plays softball, both rec and select. So we're down at these fields a lot. One of the biggest challenges is any, any weeknight, both the softball and baseball in the spring, they have their rec seasons. And so you'll have games going on, and, and the entire parking lot gets filled up, and people have to park across the street at Lou Clarkson, let alone, and obviously we had the, we had the citizen who contacted us about, I'm not sure this, what the name of the street is, if it's Beasley, or I may be getting that street wrong, but it is, that says, there's a lot of cars that park there, especially, that's a little bit more baseball-type parking, because you can park there, and then there's a little path that takes you right to those baseball fields. So I do think in addition to this parking lot, and then the smaller one, we do need to revisit figuring out a way that some sort of crossing there to make it safer for people to cross if they're parking at the elementary school at Timber Ridge. Because that is, people sometimes do have to go park at Timber Ridge. And then when it's, when it's, it's a later game, we play right up until dark. Um, and there's no lights on any of these fields. I do think we need to revisit the, the, some sort of, uh, you know, punt, you know, you can hit a light and hit a button to, you know, or some sort of crossing device there at, of 54th. Because otherwise, I think we run the risk of, of a tragedy happening at some point. So I do think we need to, to revisit that part of, of that as well to help deal with some of the traffic issues. That's not part of this plan, but just wanted to mention that tonight, because that is something we've talked about in the past, and I'm sort of, haven't really revisited, so.
And, and this will handle probably 90, 95% of the weekends. It's the big tournaments that occasionally come up that I think are, are more of the issues. And it's, it's not really the actual tournament, it's the coming and going, and when games overlap, that you have basically people coming in and they can't find parking spots because there's currently games going on. So it's those overlap between games that really often cause the problems.
John, I have one picky question. In this plan, at the north end of the parking lot, there's a transformer with some shrubs around it. And I would think at snow removal, you might want to rethink that position of that transformer, because that might be a prime spot for moving snow.
So we'll be working with Mid-American Energy on exactly those locations, and we'll, we'll look at those as closer as we get to that stage, certainly.
And then the only other thing I would say is, you know, um, I'd like to see us go a little above and beyond when it comes to tree plantings, when it's our own projects. And, um, you know, I think, I think we could do a little bit more tree, considering the amount of trees we're grading out to put in the storm retention area, et cetera. Might be nice to do a little more tree plant.
But this, this area, we'll probably do some initial plantings with the project. But I think the vast majority of the trees that go onto this site, because it is our site, will come in over the course of the next three to five years. Once again, it's, it's to, I'm one, a huge proponent of adding not only diversity of trees, but diversity of ages of trees. So I like a planting program that extends the planting for several years with the project.
100% agree with that. But I'm going to be continuing to push that in the construction projects that we start doing from now on, that we do more planting trees. Thanks.
And I will, will make one comment with this, that. I will make one comment with this, that the area of disturbance for this project, basically almost everything in this is what would be considered scrub trees. In fact, I started work here eight and a half years ago, and there wasn't a tree on this particular location. There were one or two small trees. It was just a kind of a brushy area. This project, we specifically went out of our way and said, we are not developing the east side of this, where the house used to be. It does have a lot of large growth oak, very old species or old trees there. And it's going to be more of a passive type area that it is not going to be disturbed with this project whatsoever. So we specifically said that, and we've had those conversations with Little League and very, very much, and they agreed with us, that there was really no reason to disturb this other park.
Where's that on the, is that shown on the drawing?
It would be, I don't know if you can scroll down, Aaron, if you have.
I think there is a, toward the beginning, there should be a demolition page, which should be one of the first pages there, probably the second page of the document, if you keep going up. You know what, you might have to, yeah, right there, there you go.
Yep. You can see the area just to, well, you
And so the original softball association proposal would have had an extra field or a practice field in that area. And the cities, you know, indicated especially that the tree board had concerns about some high-quality oak trees in that area. Didn't want to remove those, and so the softball association.
Trees there. There's trees that are close to 100 years old on that.
Was agreeable. You know, I will tell you, one of the biggest needs in this area is those permanent bathrooms. Right now, there's four porta-potties that serve this. And it's not, you know, we, my daughter played in a tournament this weekend in South Des Moines. And the only thing that that place, that location has, it's way superior to us, is on the bathroom side. It's just, the porta potty situation there is, it's not acceptable. And it's really frankly, doesn't reflect well on our community from that we have a softball side. It isn't as nice as the baseball side. So this will help bring those in alignment. And which is, I think, really important, so.
Questions for either Aaron or myself? Okay, thank you.
Mont, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 21-122?
Second, Pope?
Second, Cindy, vote please.
Pope?
Yes.
Evans?
Martin? Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Item 7D, consider change orders number 22, 23, 25, 43, and 45 with Hanson JTC LLC for the Johnson Town Center project. David?
Good evening. Got a number of change orders that have been pending review for a while, and got them ready to go for your approval tonight. The first 22R relates to landscaping. That's really site-wide. We've made changes as we've adjusted the project, particularly along the properties we acquired on 63rd. And we've added some bulbs and those types of things. We've also, because we've acquired the properties along 63rd, I needed to do some design and grading for the sidewalk and installation of the sidewalk along 63rd. So this change order would accomplish all of that. In addition, there's a couple of lockers that were added that would be used, the splash pad and the ice rink for shoes and such. So that total change order kind of encompassed a bunch of different things. Came to about $44,096.47. 23R is related to the pump track and the trailhead. So in the trailhead area, that's just to the east of City Hall, one of the ideas that was talked about was a pump track that would be not a paved track, but a track that kids could get on with their bike, have some inundations and ups and downs and those types of things. The original concept or design from Confluence had limestone pavers going across the bottom areas of detention basins where there might be more common to be wet. That came back with a cost of about $40,000, which staff found excessive. We did review that with the amenities committee. Councilmembers Evans and Martin at one of our meetings, and they've asked some questions about alternatives. Really, there are no good alternatives and none that were any cheaper. And so the proposal here and the suggestion is that that area would all be seeded in a low, no-mow type of a grass. The remaining areas around it would be in a taller prairie, so you'll be able to clearly see where the trail is. The pump track's not going to be usable for a couple of years until we get a good, solid growth of the grasses and the natives coming up. And at that time, we'd reevaluate, look at potentially just a gravel in those areas if that was necessary. Put that in now, until the grass is established, it's likely to get, have some erosion on it. And so this would just accomplish the seeding in those areas. And the other part of this particular change order, there is an emergency call light that'll be out right along the trail that was relocated, so it's closer to where the actual overhead light is in that area. Because the original location had some conflicts. It was closer to where Up Down is now, so it's been moved. So that total change order is just over $16,200. Change order 25R is a small one. With the properties that were acquired on 63rd, they had some existing landscaping, some of which was in really bad shape. And so our park staff reviewed all of the trees on there, and there were some that were damaged or not good species that were removed. This would accommodate those removals and the approach removals. So just over $4,300. And the final change order is related to ripples in the footings. And this one, we've been working on for quite a while to get the cost down. So the ripples needs footings to sit on. We've known that. That was engineered and bid out. The challenging part with this particular change order is the ADA requirement that, because ripples basically sits on the ground, he's not elevated. Anyone that's sight impaired would have the ability or would be able to walk into him without knowledge. And so there was a lot of discussions. Does it need to be elevated on some sort of base? How do we notify folks that he's there? The solution that was worked out is a decorative, and there is an attachment, Cindy, the ripples ADA. The solution that was worked out, and they've looked at different vendors to try to make sure this is done in a way that's maintainable for a long, for the long future. It would be stones that would be set in concrete that would stick up. That would provide that notification for anyone that's visually impaired, but also provide some artistic nature to it. So it would sort of look like ripples or waves in the water as ripples is coming out of the water. And so that's the nature of the, Cindy's got pulled up there, the nature of the stonework that would be placed in concrete there. So that total change order comes to just under $41,000. And most of that is it's kind of split evenly between the footings and the stonework there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. So there's not, the track was never in the original contract documents. So it was one of the things we were talking about, didn't have fully designed, and so so there's no deduct. They just had a proposed change order that was, I think the limestone was about $40,000 for that, so. That was originally part of this 23R, and that's why it's got the R behind it. It's been revised, and that's been pulled out.
David, I think that the stones to address the ADA issues is a good way to solve the concern there. I'm just wondering if someone is sight impaired, walking with a cane or otherwise, are they going to know what those stones represent?
Well, so Ronaldo worked, the artist worked with their ADA department, someone at Iowa State. And this was found to be an acceptable solution in their review, so.
I didn't know until about a week ago that the the material that we use for the crossing, the sidewalk crossings, the raised.
Rubber domes.
Yeah. Intended to, for that purpose, is to alert someone who is sight impaired that there is a street crossing coming up. So I was wondering if they would recognize then the stones has that same purpose.
Their ADA review was this would suffice for that purpose, to notify someone using a cane that they were coming into contact with something that.
I think it's a great solution like that.
Vertical impairment, so. Yep.
Any other questions for David? If not, do we have a motion to approve the change orders number 22, 23, 25, 43, and 45?
Reapproval, Pope?
Second, Martin.
Second, Cindy, vote please.
Yes.
If you call my name, yes. I cannot hear you, Cindy.
Temple?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Passed. Item 7E, consider approval of claims in the amount of $793,084.79.
Reapproval, Pope?
Second, Martin.
Second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Evans?
Tim, do we have anything else under city administrator staff comments?
No additional comments.
Can we go back to the the change into the minutes that were not reflected right on that field? As I had also mentioned about the sidewalk, making sure that we try to save as many trees. And I thought that what we, whatever it was that we said we wanted was to go option one. And then Tom mentioned the trees specifically. And then I also mentioned the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think when Cindy relists to the tape, that she should incorporate all three of those things into the, making sure that the minutes were reflected in that, too. So I don't so that, what you said at the meeting also needs to be incorporated in that, too.
And so what will happen is Cindy will go back and listen to the correct the minutes, bring it back to us. Because I'll need to re-sign anyway, so we'll have another look at it. Anything further? Mont, we are adjourned. Thanks, all.
Good night, guys.
Good night.